But I've got six o'clock, straight up. So we'll go ahead and bring our meeting to order. At this time, if you will, we'll, are the role of the city council.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Alex Heath.
Present.
Honorable Linda J. Davis.
Present.
Honorable Hattie Portis Jones.
Present.
Honorable Samantha Hudson.
Present.
Honorable James Whitmore. Honorable Ulysses J. Smallwood.
Present.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, we'll go straight to our first agenda.
First item is LCI Gateway Connectivity Study Final Report. This is from Economic Development.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
We are happy to come before you and excited to present the final report for the Livable Centers Initiative Gateway Connectivity Study. We are grateful, first of all, to the many partners, stakeholders, community members, business, and industry leaders who participated. Moreover, we are very thankful to the mayor and city council, to administrative leadership, our department directors, and consultants, particularly the Fairburn team, who participated and helped to lead the charge. The Fairburn team consisted of our city administrator, Mr. Tony Phillips, Ms. Our Assistant City Administrator, Ms. Jamila Chris, Director of Community Development and Public Works, Lester Thompson, Director of Planning and Zoning, Ms. Denise Brookins, myself, as well as our Communications Director, Ms. Jacqueline Howell. Also on the team in which you will hear from this evening, our project team from Sizemore, the principal architect, Mr. Bill De Saint Oven, project manager, lead planner, Deanna Murphy, our Planner of Economic Development, who actually led the project, Mr. Randy Gibbs, our urban designer planner, Nishant Ostwal, our community engagement from the collaborative firm, is Tricia Kolpetzer. Presenting tonight, on behalf of her team, will be Nichelle. Transportation and Economics from Tool is Ms. Elizabeth Shin, and Housing and Marketing Analysis from KBA is Ms. Tate Wilson. This was a comprehensive approach that aimed to create more of a connected and vibrant and sustainable downtown. The purpose of the study was namely to build upon the existing LCI Downtown Master Plan, to improve connections between the education campus and downtown across Broad Street. Highway 29 overlaid district updates and allow for middle housing, trending restaurants, office and entertainment uses, and mixed-use development projects. The grant funding was provided by ARC. The Atlanta Regional Commission awarded Fairburn $200,000 grant to leverage the LCI Downtown Master Plan. Fairburn, the city of Fairburn matched that grant with $50,000. The focus was to transform the education campus and primary gateway into downtown, improving connectivity and incorporating innovative technology and creative place making. The tactical study elements that you will hear this evening, again, building upon the LCI Downtown Master Plan, it addressed many of the improvements that were recommendation, recommended, including catalytic sites throughout the city of Fairburn. Our consultants and practitioners represent the collaborative firm, the Sizemore Group, KB Advisory, Pond Company, and ARC. And finally, the education campus expansion and community connectivity study looked at transportation holistically and comprehensively, creating a pathway for better safety and also movement of our pedestrians. Again, I'm very excited to present the findings that represent, we believe, what the community inputs for your consideration and review, and I would like to invite Ms. Deanna Murphy to come and present. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Deanna Murphy with Sizemore Group, and we are thrilled to be here tonight to be presenting the final recommendations for the master plan. Tonight, first, I'll reintroduce the team. I won't go into too much detail here because Sylvia did such a wonderful job of presenting who from Fairburn worked really closely on this project, and then who from our project team worked as well. And we do have several project team members here tonight who will be presenting as well. And I should mention Randy Gibbs did an excellent job of running this project as a project manager. He has now moved on to another company, which we are very sad about, but we're excited for him and his new steps. But he's here tonight to help fill any gaps and make sure all the information is shared as well. And so we appreciate you being here. Thank you. So our agenda for tonight is to go over the scope of work, the overall goals and the community engagement process. We'll then move into the recommendations and look at the final community work program, including a 100-day action plan. So in terms of scope of work, this is the study area. This is the LCI boundary, Livable Center Initiative boundary. This was the previous boundary that we had, that had been completed as part of the previous LCI. Some minor tweaks and changes to it, but nothing major. It's ultimately the downtown overlay district that it encompasses. And a lot of the focus of this plan was not just on downtown, since you have looked at your downtown quite a bit, but how do we revitalize the campus? And how do we connect that area to downtown and to the surrounding communities? Our overall scope of work is listed here. We started off with understanding the existing conditions for the downtown area. We did that with on-the-foot review of existing conditions, as well as interviews and stakeholder engagement. We had a market analysis done by KB Advisory. Our community engagement, the collaborative firm, helped us with that effort, and they will talk in a moment more about that detail. And then, once we took that information from the existing conditions assessment, the market, and what we were hearing from the community, we began to develop our concept plans. And so we'll present those to you all tonight. We have a series of concept plans that include arts and place making and connectivity opportunities, and then we do have transportation-specific recommendations. And then, of course, the implementation plan, which is the 100-day action plan. We are wrapping this all up into a final report as we speak, so that will be presented back to the city by the end of the month. But before we finalize that, we wanted to make sure we presented to you all, we're able to address any questions, concerns, edits that you would like to see. This is our overall project schedule. We're about a year from the beginning. We started this project last May and have worked steadily throughout the year. We are, as I mentioned, wrapping up that report this month, and next month, if all goes according to plan, we would like to come back and present to you all for adoption of that LCI plan. And in LCI, if you are not familiar, it's a Livable Center Initiative Study. This program was started in the late 90s by the Atlanta Regional Commission. At the time, the Atlanta metro area was not meeting irritainment quality standards, so the federal government threatened to take away some transportation dollars. So in response, the Atlanta Regional Commission started this program so that we could work on ways to improve our air quality. And one of the main opportunities in transportation is to get people out of their single occupancy vehicle into live-work communities, walkable communities. And so that's how this program was born, and that's really its intent, is to try to get people into these more live-work-play communities, out of cars, onto bikes, onto sidewalks. One of the great things that comes out of the LCI program is implementation dollars, which I know you all have seen great success on in your downtown, your streetscape improvements. Those dollars are typically focused on transportation improvement, so our transportation recommendations, we hope, can then be carried forward and funded partially through the LCI program. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Nichelle to talk about engagement.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Not Tricia. I'm Nichelle from the collaborative firm. And to briefly talk about the, which she just mentioned, the type of engagements that we did. So we did pop-up events. For an example, National Out, saw a few of you all there. Also, the tree lighting, those are just some of the examples. We had PAG meetings, Project Advisory Group, where the members would come together and have questions answered, get, receive detailed information. Because if you know Randy, he's going to give very detailed information. So every meeting was very detailed. We had three community meetings with the community members, and also, it was via Zoom as well. So those that could not attend in person was also able to attend online. We had stakeholder interviews, and those were also online as well. Community surveys, and we have, in the final report, we'll have the exactly how many the community surveys were with those said. Also, it's not mentioned up there, but the downtown development authority meetings focusing on businesses, specifically asking for feedback, as this would be a huge interest of theirs. Youth Engagement spent some time and energy at the Global Academy, and that was really, really positive, and the children was able to give their feedback, as well as parents as well. Mayor and city council meetings, those were all virtual, but they were recorded, and we have really good notes from those as well. An internal workshop that went extremely well, where community, the PAG members, and council members are all together and actually doing some hands-on projects, discussing designing, and what-if, and what-if, and what-if, what-if, how about this, and how about that. So it was really cool. And then lastly, we had roundtable discussions, and again, phone calls throughout the project that answered and went along with our engagement piece. That's it.
Thank you. So from that, we were able to reiterate some of the goals that were established early on in the process by the city. And that included establishing a distinctive gateway feature, specifically near the campus, an opportunity to really welcome all into the city. To enhance accessibility and connectivity, specifically connecting that campus area to downtown and to the surrounding community. Increase housing opportunities, a mix of housing typologies throughout the study area. Boosting community and visitor engagement, really building from some of the great events that happened in the city, by the city, as well as in the Renaissance Festival area. Developing inviting public spaces and continuing to build from what you already have in the downtown area. Retaining the historic charm and buildings within the downtown area. And then, also fostering an inclusive and welcoming environment that really is focused on a family-first opportunity. A lot of our conversations were about, when we talked about amenities that the community wanted to see, or stakeholders wanted to see, it was about opportunities for families to get together, whether that was enhanced park space, or a jumpy place, new family-friendly restaurants. There really was a focus on making sure we were creating safe and accessible environments for families. So with that, I will lead us into the concept plans. That really helped us determine where we were headed. And so there are three areas that we looked at, the first being the educational campus. And as, as we were able to work with the developers who are looking at redevelopment on that site, things were changing slightly here and there. And so we were able to address needs on that site and expansion of that. So I'm going to start on 138 and, and Broad Street. And at that intersection, our understanding is that GDOT owns that property, a large chunk of property at that corner. And so there is a great opportunity for the city to redevelop that into a public-accessible amenity and a real true gateway site. So we looked at that as an opportunity for some green space, perhaps an amphitheater that could really welcome visually into the city, as well as having space for community and family. The buildings around that could be retail or commercial that complement the amphitheater, as well as perhaps a YMCA, or a Boys and Girls Club, some type of recreational use that also continues to benefit from that green space, as well as the access to the two schools that are right nearby. Moving just south of that, along Broad Street, the proposed development that is underway, we were able to shift and add a grocer into that site. That was a discussion that happened about halfway through our project. So we're showing on the, the pink building, the pink L-shaped building, that is proposed grocery site. And then across the street from that, we have a nice pocket park with retail sitting on it, with housing above, the opportunity to really engage with a mixed-use center there. Similar to the plans that have been proposed before, we're showing townhomes on the back end of that site to step down towards the single-family that's across the street, and then additional infill for multifamily. We're also showing a roundabout on this entrance to that site, another opportunity to kind of slow traffic down, let them know that there is activity, something to stop at and enjoying and engage in, and then another gateway site, so we can put signage, landscaping to really welcome. On the opposite side from that proposed development, there are some existing industrial spaces that are underutilized. So we saw the opportunity there to turn that into more of an entertainment district, could be family-friendly activities, could be a brewery, just an opportunity to really enliven that space across the street and make that a true node. You'll also notice on this plan and the other sites that we have a dashed blue line, and that is our trail connectivity. Connectivity was a huge part of this LCI. And so we're showing here a connectivity, a loop that goes from that, from 138, near and around the park, down the new development, and back up to Global Impact Academy, to create a mile, a walkable, a couple miles, so if someone wants to go get an exercise, we always think loops are a great way to engage the community in this walkability and provide the needed infrastructure nearby. On our Milo Fisher site, so this site sits next to Landmark Christian, and the opportunity here is that that site is city-owned property, and it is deeded to be green space. And so we looked at the, the opportunity here to ultimately turn that into a nice amenity for the community, where we could add residential around it, maybe medium, low, low to medium density, some townhomes or missing-middle type housing that could take advantage of this enhanced land pricing because of the opportunity for green space here. You'll also see our blue lines on this. The blue line connects all the way up to Broad Street to connect the downtown to this area with a loop around the park. And now, our third site was the downtown area. What we looked at here is specifically preserving that historic storefront. We wanted to make sure that that, that charm that is downtown Fairburn remains. But some of the other elements were expanding the plaza that sits in your, in your downtown, next to the historic buildings, and creating more of an amenity space there, and filling that with some uses, whether that is institutional, commercial uses, or multifamily housing. And so we tried to keep most of that higher-density housing near that core of the downtown area and filling behind, essentially behind all of your historic buildings. And then, as you move closer to the youth center, we looked at opportunities for cottage housing, townhomes, opportunities for kind of that step down in housing, so as we move to some more single-family in the area, but really creating an opportunity of different types of housing, so we can have ownership, excuse me, ownership and rental in downtown, but at a density high enough that it warrants being right next to all this retail. And then here we have our blue line, essentially starting at the youth center. We're looking at connecting that, that line all the way over to, to the new development, and I'll show you a larger diagram of that in a moment. But you can also see north-south lining connecting to Duncan Park, and then down to Milo Fisher Park. And this is actually a rendering of the downtown area. This is the expansion of your downtown plaza, moving where you have parking behind your existing buildings, turning that into continued plaza space. You could have farmers' markets back there, larger events, and really just opportunity for people to hang out and rest and enjoy time with friends and family. This is that overall connectivity. You can see all those dashed blue lines are now connected at the larger scale here, connecting us from 138 through the new development site, the campus area, through the neighborhoods, down into downtown, and ultimately to that youth center, and then across the way to Milo Park on the south side and Duncan Park on the north side. Move on to our transportation recommendations. A lot of the focus here was about safety. With the family-first focus, we wanted to make sure that we were creating opportunities for safe bicycle pedestrian travel throughout the city. And so a lot of this came from the Federal Highway Administration's Countermeasures Initiative. And so there are 28 countermeasures that they proposed to be looked at by jurisdictions, and so we started there and were able to pull certain items that made most sense for Fairburn. The recommendations were also focused around these three main factors. There is many, when we looked at the statistics, many of the pedestrian crashes involved people in their teens and people that were 65-plus, who were driving. And so the opportunity to make sure that we are enhancing driver education for those senses, we wanted to make sure that was a key focus. We also noted that Broad Street has a lot of driveways, creating a lot of conflict points, especially if you're walking or biking down that corridor. So we're making recommendations to consolidate the driveways along Broad Street to make that safer ultimately. And then, left turns are always a challenge. Those are where we see most of our accidents, and so the opportunity to consolidate left turns by looking at median opportunities, closing off some left turns so that we have, people will have to do a U-turn to get around, makes it a little safer ultimately, although it has to be done carefully, right? Because we don't want to take away access from anyone. But something to look at and continue to evaluate. So looking at our bicycle and pedestrian focus, we have a priority set of trails here, very similar to what you saw in our diagram connecting our sites. But this goes a little bit deeper into where we're putting bicycle-specific streetscapes. And so we have connections from Duncan Park all the way into downtown and across to Milo Park, and then we're connecting to the north, and you can see the loop that kind of goes back around to our educational campus. So we'll zoom in to each of these. So connecting Duncan Park down into downtown, we're making several recommendations. First is an overall streetscape enhancement to move from sidewalks to multi-use trails. So we're recommending an overall eight-to-10-foot multi-use trail on one side of the road. In order to do that, we are recommending removing some of your acceleration and deceleration lanes along Rivertown Road. And then looking at some opportunities to include rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Sorry, it's always a mouthful. And those would be an opportunity to create safer crossings without having to put signals in. And then ultimately, adding some sidewalks on the north side of the road. to make sure that we're allowing for the connectivity on both sides. So when we talk about removing acceleration and deceleration lanes, there's some great benefits to that. According to federal highway standards, acceleration and deceleration lanes are specifically recommended to be used on freeways or arterials that have a greater speed than 55 miles per hour. So in neighborhood, ultimately in neighborhood areas and residential streets where we're trying to discourage fast traffic, we recommend not putting acceleration and deceleration lanes. And then another note is that typically you want a minimum of 200 right-turn vehicles a day in order to warrant there being a deceleration or acceleration lane. And then here's an example of a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. You can see it's ultimately a push button for the pedestrian where it starts flashing and cars stop accordingly if there's a pedestrian in the right-of-way or about to cross. It's not an actual signal light, just the flashing on either side. This is recommended on roadways that are under 40 miles per hour and have great benefit of reducing pedestrian crashes up to 47% and increasing motorist yields up to 98%. Moving on to West Campbellton Streets, we're looking at opportunities similar here where we are recommending a multi-use path on one side of the streets. In order to gain that, we are looking at removing a turn lane and reducing the lanes from 12 feet to 11 feet. We are also looking at proposing a roundabout where the road wides, Rivertown and Campbellton, the opportunity to create a safer crossing there. And then continuing to look at audit opportunities where Campbellton meets Broad Street, the opportunity to look at a signal with GDOT. My understanding is there, we need more traffic count on Broad Street to warrant the signal. But as that continues to increase, continuing that conversation with GDOT. Benefits of roundabouts are that they make for safer and more efficient intersections and that they have an 82% reduction in fatal and injury crashes. So great benefit to adding that to that Y-intersection. On Highway 92, we have some recommendations here specifically. When we look at Broad Street and Pine Street, we're looking at the opportunity for a shareduse path. And you can see those diagrams on the right. Moving the lanes from 11, or from 12 feet to 11 feet, giving us a little extra room for that side path. The opportunity to improve signal timing, this is near Landmark Christian Academy. There's a lot of traffic at certain times, so making sure that the signal timing is set appropriately to that. And then adding in a pedestrian hybrid beacon, and I'll give more detail on that on the next page, at 92 and Bay Street, a lot of crossing here. So since we cannot warrant a signal at this time, looking at the opportunity for pedestrian hybrid beacon. And then lastly, conducting a railroad underpass study. Ultimately, it will be safer if we can get pedestrians underneath the road or above the road. So if we can look at opportunities to go below the road here, there is some topographic opportunities to take advantage of that, but it needs a further study to really guarantee that. And it's expensive, so there's other opportunities in the meantime. This is a pedestrian hybrid beacon on the image on the right there. This is, acts like a traffic signal. So when a pedestrian comes and pushes the button, it will start flashing red, it will turn red. Automobiles are legally bound to stop. And then it will turn to a flashing yellow where then they can go if there's not a pedestrian in the crosswalk. So a little bit more regulated than our rectangular rapid flashing beacon. This is recommended on streets that have speeds over 35 miles per hour that have more lanes and more traffic. So Broad Street is a great case study for this type of use. Safety benefits include that 55% reduction in pedestrian crashes, 29% reduction in total crashes, and a 15% reduction in serious injury or fatal crashes. Now moving to West Campbellton, the opportunities here are similar to the others. We are looking at a multi-use path so that we can increase our pedestrian and bicycle safety along the road. Similarly, looking at a one-foot reduction in each lane to make room for that. We are also looking at including a roundabout for traffic calming, but also, well, we're looking at a couple options, a roundabout, planter, splinter islands, or pedestrian hybrid beacon to create safety along the area. And then adding that pedestrian hybrid beacon again at West Campbellton and Dodd Streets. We're also recommending, in the meantime, to look at smaller safety improvement opportunities. Areas where a roundabout might not be feasible, obviously that requires some road right-of-way acquisition. There might not always be the opportunity to do that. So even if it's just paint on the street to create safer visual opportunities, we're recommending looking at that at some of these more challenged intersections. Now moving over to Elder Streets, again, we have our multi-use path on one side of the road and reduction in our lane widths. We're looking at vertical deflections here, and those are things like speed bumps, speed tables. Ultimately, opportunities, medians where we can prevent and put a buffer or vertical opportunity to slow people down to make that street even safer. And here we're getting very close to the schools, so even more benefit in slowing traffic down. Some of the additional recommendations, this is really focused on where Broad Strickland and Fayette meets. There is a goat path, which I'm sure you all have seen, across, along the road or along Broad Street and crosses down into, to the, connect to the, to the intersection crossing. So ultimately, it would be great if we could get a pedestrian underpass here. That is a big move. There's a lot of crossing here. It's, you know, there are some feasibilities to that, but that is a bigger, more extensive move. In the short time, in the short term, what we're recommending is creating an actual infrastructure sidewalk instead of the goat path that connects the MARTA station to that intersection. And then looking at putting a pedestrian hybrid beacon here. That would allow traffic to stop once a pedestrian hits the button and make it safer for those to get across the street. So with those recommendations, we have started putting those into a community work program. The opportunity of how to achieve these recommendations over the next five years. And so there's a lot of items in here. I'll just hit some highlights and then we'll really focus in on the 100-day action plan. We are recommending a follow-up with a Parks and Recreation Trail Plan or Study. There have been trails proposed in this plan and in other plans. So really formalizing that in a singular plan to see, to know steps forward there. We're looking at opportunities for continued creative placemaking strategies. You have a document that was completed several years ago and you've been implementing a lot of that. With the new focus on this plan, there might want to be an update to that to understand where areas are that you want to focus now and some of the strategies you want to undertake. With all the streetscape improvements, we're recommending a streetscape design guideline. And looking at a 2% for the arts program, an opportunity to help fund some of that creative placemaking and the arts in your community. That would be new developments, you could start with civic developments. But we've seen at work where you have a voluntary developer, 2%, where they actually provide 2% of the construction fee to an arts program. We're also recommending a downtown parking study as a follow-up to this. As new development comes in, we want to make sure that you have sufficient parking and if a parking deck is needed. We are recommending some programming, specifically market in the downtown area, especially with the expansion of the plaza in the downtown. Pop-up events and opportunities to really engage in that space. Opportunities to ensure that your businesses are also aligned and supported. We have some recommendations in terms of continued conversations with those businesses and opportunities to bring code enforcement in to ensure that they have the needs and the beautification that they're desiring, as well as a safety campaign following that. Some more arts-based recommendations like artistic crosswalks and interactive crosswalks, moving well within that where we're putting some of our new pedestrian infrastructure, looking at how we can brighten up those intersections with creative crosswalks and make it really visible for drivers. And then we have some specific recommendations on the actual concept plans. For the educational campus, we're recommending opportunity to look at what key properties might want to be acquired in order to make that gateway site eligible. So continuing to work with Georgia Department of Transportation. We're recommending continuing the trail design and implementation as a follow-up step and implementing the pocket park elements. And then last and probably most importantly is looking at some of your potential funding mechanisms, specifically for that site. I know we've got, we've talked about the TAD, we've talked about an SSD, a special use district. And so looking at what those opportunities are, I know the city manager's team has been working closely on that. For the downtown site, we're recommending allowing for a variety of housing types in downtown and looking at acquiring key properties to make sure that the plan can happen, whether that's the public space or opportunities to work with a developer to put higher-density housing in downtown. We're recommending increasing the minimum heights in downtown and then also looking at acquiring those properties for the plaza extension. And then at Milo Fisher Park, we're recommending to start designing the park elements and the walking trail. An opportunity to extend Malone Street would give more access to that park space. So looking at that as an opportunity and acquiring necessary properties to complete the multi-use path. In terms of the transportation recommendations, I won't go too deep into these. These are really reiterating what we talked about. It's first steps like adding the necessary sidewalk and multi-use trail infrastructure, where we want to put the pedestrian crossings and those rectangular rapid flashing beacons. So all of that is outlined here. We do have cost with all of the recommendations and the recommended responsible party. So now I'll move on to the 100-day action plan. And this is what we're recommending or accomplished over the next three months. Starting with celebrating National Bike Day with so much bike culture already here in the city and the opportunity to expand that with new infrastructure, we recommend really leaning into that. And so having an event here, maybe it's a fun ride, maybe it's a safety workshop, but really looking at the opportunities to engage with that event. We're also recommending coordinating with the Renaissance Festival organizers and having something in downtown to continue to grow that partnership and relationship. Continuing discussions with investors and developers to implement the educational campus. That's already far underway, so just continuing those efforts. Give you an easy check mark there. And then identifying the grants and funding opportunities, whether that's a special service district or engagement with the TAD, GDOT funding opportunities, and making sure that we're aligning those with the recommendations in this overall plan. Next, we're recommending to identify strategic properties and parcels to acquire in order to facilitate the vision for this plan. Exploring funding opportunities for a citywide Fairburn bicycle and pedestrian trail master plan. To plan, organize and execute a walk to bike, a walk or bike to school day in line with Bike Month. And then set up a quarterly meeting with GDOT. There's a lot of coordination that has to happen with GDOT in order to see this plan to fruition. So making sure that there is continued communication on a consistent basis. And the last item we have in the 100-day plan is to do an event downtown where you temporarily close the streets to really support that bike pedestrian engagement. If you haven't been to in Atlanta Streets Alive, it's a great example where they close down major streets throughout the city and allow for just cyclists and pedestrians to take over, take back that space. So an opportunity to really show that that is a focus for the city. And our next steps are wrapping this all into a final document and then coming back to you all and asking for your blessing and approval of the overall plan. Thank you.
Okay, this time I'll ask any members of council who got questions. Go ahead, Mr. Whitmore and Ms. Jones. On the side, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Came in late, but I did come in and I, certain key points kind of tickled my ears a little bit. And I am familiar with the YMCA and Boys and Girls Club. You mentioned that as I was coming in. And I just need to hear a little bit more to that because it's my understanding in dealing with Boys and Girls Club while in the state of New Jersey and also inquiring about YMCA's for a city of this size, that will never happen. Has things changed?
That's a great question. You know, I think if you partner with some of the other jurisdictions nearby, I think there is a real opportunity for that. But I understand what you're saying as a solar city with the population you have, that may be a challenge. But I think if you look at it at a wider swath, I think there is an opportunity there.
Thank you.
And Ms. Jones?
Yes, thank you. Great report and a lot of items for us to consider and direction for us to get. And I appreciate that included some things that we've really been talking about for years to include in our city. I would ask you about strategies for transportation, specifically discussions with DOT. What things that we need to consider? Because that's really been a difficulty for us, that coupled with CSX and the railroad. So can you talk a little bit more about strategies that we can implement? Things that we haven't tried or haven't considered for us to evaluate and look at?
That's a big question. You know, I think a lot of it has to do with getting your district representative on board. So the quarterly meetings, we believe, will help get that constant communication so they know where you all are headed and get them bought in to the overall plan. Does my team have any other?
Could you come to the mic, please?
Bill Deese and Alvin, I've been down here planning on and off for the past 15, 20 years. But anyways, the one thing you can do with the Department of Transportation, their efforts take so long, really. So trying to get them to do something is a five, 10, 20-year effort, really. And the special service district we talked about can develop a way for you to fund it and you'll get their attention. I've worked with a lot of CIDs. What the CIDs will do is they'll even fund their review process. But you need the resources to do that and we gave you some creative tools in this plan to do that. And I really think you need to look at those tools within the first 100 days.
But that's very helpful and we will take note on that. But that's very helpful, and we will take note on that. I also, yes, please.
Randy Gibbs, I apologize, I'm coming from another duty. During this process, we did talk to the district representative for Georgia DDOT, GDOT, excuse me, and so they're well aware of what we're planning and what we're suggesting all along throughout the LCI district. And so what we're hoping for is that momentum continues based off of the conversations that we initiated with their team.
Thank you. And then my second question has to do with, you spoke about, we're talking about housing, increasing height restrictions. Could you talk a little bit about that and what are you recommending in terms of height restriction? And then if I could have Ms. Brookins, if you could just state one more time what our height restrictions are and why we have them for the city of Fairburn downtown specifically.
We have height restrictions, but it's, any developer can request a variance of sorts. Actually, it's a use permit for any height restriction. So we now have in our policies the ability to provide some additional height if a developer came with the right project. It's just not permitted by right.
Okay, and do we have a maximum on the books?
Yes, I believe it's 48 feet, 40?
What is that in terms of stories?
It's about two to three stories roughly.
Okay, that's what we have now. All right, so then what would the height increase look like then that you're suggesting we consider?
Yeah, we're recommending a five to six heights. That would allow for the multifamily. Typically, if you're looking at a stick-frame multifamily, you're looking at four to six. If you have podium where you have retail on the bottom floor with stick above, that's typically a six-story building. So it's just allowing for current development standards to be able to into downtown.
All right, thank you for that. And then I still don't know why we have a height restriction, and so maybe we need to have a discussion or explore why we do in order to help us make the decision on how high we should allow a developer to go if someone were to request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, good evening. Tate Wilson, TAV Advisory. I believe that the height restriction comes out of a preservation of kind of the historic district, but unfortunately, you know, or not unfortunately, depending on how you see it, the overlay district is stretching well beyond your kind of historic core. And so I think reassessing whether that's an appropriate move forward if you're looking to, you know, incentivize growth in this corridor and not having every developer go through a variance would also be helpful in that aspect.
Ms. Davis and then, Ms. Hudson.
All right, thank you for that, yes.
Ms. Davis and then, Ms. Hudson then.
Okay.
Go ahead, ma'am, you have something else to say? Go ahead, Ms. Davis.
Okay, yes, thank you for this. It seems, I mean, how fast a year can go by? And you all have been little busy bees, busy bees. That's a lot of stuff to kind of grasp at one time, but there are a couple of things I want to ask and get more information on. First of all, I'd like to recommend, or commend, excuse me, you all for incorporating Milo Fisher In that park, there's, I don't know if a lot of people know, but there is cultural history in reference to Milo Fisher, and I just wanted to know, would you have some type of plaque or something that would talk about that historic? Okay.
Absolutely, yeah, that, thank you for mentioning that. That's a great idea. We are looking for place-making opportunities, and that's a great way to bring that sense of what the history is of the area back, so absolutely.
Okay, okay. I wanted some more information in reference to, and a couple of places you said that you may need to acquire housing. Do you know how much housing you'd have to acquire? Is that housing of people that have homes here in Fairburn already?
Yeah, so sorry, the intent is to acquire property for more housing, not necessarily taking away from housing that people already own. So no, we're trying to stay away from any legacy neighborhoods, properties that are owned by individuals. We're not recommending any acquisition of individuals.
Awesome, I misunderstood that. The roundabouts that you talked about, now, there are all different kinds of roundabouts in the city. There's some that's simple, some that's absolutely, I mean, complicated. They have signs going every which way with names and stuff. So how many do you think you would need to, you know, do what you want to do here? And are they going to be just the simple round ones or are they going to be complicated? And I know it depends on where they are situated.
Yeah, and I will say they all are going to take further study. I think we have three proposed right now in the plan, two within the residential area, which would be very simple. Those are one-lane roundabouts, you know, likely a very small roundabout in the center, maybe with just some greenery, an opportunity to just kind of make it a little safer to get around and slow traffic down. The most complicated one will be the one on Broad Street, and that is going to take a lot of coordination with GDOT. So there are a lot of lanes, so you're looking at likely three lanes going around the roundabout to keep the lane as is. So that one would be a little more, have more signage, may take people a little longer to get used to, but it would be a really good opportunity to kind of slow traffic down, to see what's happening there, entice people to come and visit and not just keep driving through, so.
All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Mine is brief, bravo, bravo. One of the things when I met with Randy that really stood out that now every time I drive, I pay attention to the bus stops, the sidewalks, where pedestrians are, it just really opened up my eyes to one of the reasons why my 12-year-old was afraid to cross the street. I was trying to teach them old-school ways of trying to cross the street, and I realized I didn't know how to cross Fairburn Street. So if I did not know how to cross Fairburn Streets, is that a difficulty that's having throughout our community? And Randy in our interview pointed that out. I think we're on the right track. We have so many assessments that are being done. We have the responsibility of implementing it. Your 100-day action plan, I think is something that this council also may need to adopt once we adopt this and getting particular projects up and moving. So again, thank you.
Yeah, I noticed that the cost on some of these projects is anywhere from one and a half to $3 million. Are we able to get grants for that type of stuff?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, the LCI sets you up for transportation implementation dollars. So those larger fees are typically an 80%, 20% match with the Atlanta Regional Commission. I will caveat that while we have mentioned certain grants, the future of grants right now are a little uncertain at the federal level, so we'll just have to see how some of that plays out. But that's typically where we'd recommend is federal grants that the ARC distributes. So it's continued conversations with the ARC to make sure that those grants are still available and how and when to apply.
Got it, thank you.
Mr. Whitmore?
Just a couple more things I didn't talk about initially, so I just wanted some of my colleagues to have their opportunities. But I would like to hear some more about speed bumps. Now, I'm a big advocate for first responders, okay? Speed bumps slows down first responders. Now, in my mind, the speed bumps that slows them down is probably not like the newer speed bumps. So I know in one community we have speed bumps, and if we had a fire or even PD, it's going to slow them down because of the way those speed bumps are. But I've been in other municipalities where they had a different setup of the speed bumps, where first responders would be able to respond without hitting those speed bumps and causing damage to the vehicles. Can you enlighten me a little more on that, please?
Yeah, I think, you know, it depends on where we're talking in terms of speed bumps. I think the only place we're recommending them right now is in front of the school to make sure that we are slowing traffic down and just not creating a raceway. But I agree, I mean, personally, I'm not a fan of speed bumps because they can do damage to cars. So I do think there, we are creating opportunities where it might not be a speed bump. It may just be narrowing the road a little bit so that cars just have to slow down, putting a median in between a street to slow cars down. So there is alternatives to the speed bumps if you're not comfortable with that. We've also seen, and maybe this is what you're referring to, is where the speed bumps have cut in them for the wheels so that first responders can get through quicker. So there are alternatives to that, but it's a good concern.
Okay. The other question I would, well, comment that I would have is in reference to roundabouts, please make sure you have a discussion with Mr. Lester Thompson. I know some years back, when we were looking at doing a roundabout right on the main road, 29, of course, it was frowned upon even though talking to GDOT because of the truck traffic that we have coming through. And with them navigating, they'll run up on the curves the whole nine yards. So that may not be an ideal place, but I think we have data to support why that wasn't moved forward with, all right? That's number one. Number two, you talked about the National Bike Day, which is great, something I've been talking to the city administrator about for the past two years. This area is becoming inundated with professional bikers on the weekend, all right? Which we talked about, I think Ms. Chris and I had a conversation about. And so it's important that we identify areas that we can incorporate that, and I know that the city has already undertaking some initiatives to review and address that. So I would ask that you kind of tie that in because there's already been conversations with that. The other thing is, you talked about Parks and Rec Trail, a trail plan. That is something else that I have been advocating for for years. It's a couple, it's a three-part plan, if you will. Number one is the community center, number two is an auditorium, and number three, because of the property that we have out there, is a great opportunity to have a trail. And of course, we have wild turkeys out there, too, so that'd be something along with whatever else is living out there that won't attack anybody. So that is great, but again, I know that the city has been reviewing, I think that's the better word right now, reviewing that and looking at financial opportunities. Because even with this past storm that we had, and there was a lot of concern, and I won't go into the particulars of the phone call, but the one thing that I realize, if we were having a bad storm and with climate control, we never know when, so it's best to be prepared. We have no place where we can have a mass gathering that it will protect our citizens. So that is very high up on my list, so if you notice, the things that I'm talking about is primarily safety-driven, and it's important that safety is always paramount versus being reactive.
Yeah.
Okay, and what else do I have? So that's it. But I, you know, again, a lot of things that you covered, there has been conversations for years, just no plan to implement in finding the financial resources. So I applaud you on your report, there's a lot of information in there, and a lot of that can be extrapolated and can be more than likely implemented with the financial resources that may or may not be available or finding the resources to make it happen. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Those are council.
Something if you don't mind, a comment you had earlier, Mr. Whitmore. Were you talking about the YMCA?
Yes.
Sir, can you speak into the mic?
When you talked about the YMCA, I began thinking through all the town plans I've done where you tried to get a YMCA, and the reason why we would recommend something like that, but what's the reality of something like that? And I thought it was a very good question. YMCA's typically start, they're a nonprofit, they start with the storefront, and unless there's, you know, the closest YMCA's are booked, they tend not to build another YMCA. Having said all that, set that aside, I think what we are trying to do is, on that park end, that piece of property that's just left over from the DOT, can we both physically and fiscally help the city? So some kind of, when you mentioned auditorium, they're expensive to operate, but that's a thing that physically helps. And then what retail needs is an anchor, and grocery stores are good anchors. So you already got a grocery store there, you got one, and maybe it orientates itself a little bit different. But also YMCA's, when we did Smyrna's downtown and we did Riverdale's downtown, we put a community center because it's, you need to have something people will drive to every day, and then that stimulates the retail growth. So I think the idea of a YMCA was more of along, it might not be a Y, but we'd like to have some kind of anchor that would drive traffic to that area and also be healthy for the community.
And well, my point in being with the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club, even if you work with another municipality, the fight is going to be whose city is it going to be in? That's number one. So that is a non-starter, if you will, but that's why we have been advocating for a community center, because all the things that you can have in a Boys and Girls Club, in a YMCA can be had in a community center.
I would encourage you to go down that route. You've got a small community center that could be, another thing is like a senior activity center. We're helping Stockbridge and they're combining a senior activity center and a youth activity center. Maybe you have, because that was a great land for the senior housing you have on that side, but maybe this one's more youth-oriented or something. Just it's, I think along those lines, and that's what we ended up doing in Smyrna and Riverdale. And we do have some creative funding tools we've been talking to you all about, depending on how much.
That's great, because my last comment would be my advocacy for the youth, but when you're looking at a community center slash rec center, however you want to identify it, it's for our youngest up to our oldest, so you're going to encompass everyone in between, and that's important because nowadays we're living longer, as long as we're doing the things to continue to live longer, which is exercise.
They're actually the best, and that was the advantage of Stockbridge, when you could do that because the seniors will use it during the day and the certain youth will do it, and then certain youth will use it after school program. Again, as an anchor driving traffic, that falls right in line.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I've got actually one minute after seven, so we're going to have to go straight into our meeting. Ladies and gentlemen have come in since we started at six. If you will, please take time and turn your cell phones to the silent position. You're appreciated. With that being said, we'll go ahead and go straight into our meeting. Calling the meeting order, Ms. City Clerk, would you please call rural council?
The Honorable Mayor Pro Tim Alex Heath.
Present.
Honorable Ulysses J. Smallwood.
Present.
Honorable James Whitmore.
Present.
Honorable Samantha Hudson.
Present.
Honorable Linda J. Davis.
Present.
Honorable Hattie Portis Jones.
Present.
Mayor, you have a call.
Okay, if everyone can, please stand for Pastor Frazier from Love Deliverance Outreach. Let's come forward. Thank you.
Amen, amen. Dear gracious heavenly Father, God, we honor you today. Lord, we thank you, God, for this great city. Lord Jesus, we thank you, God, for the leaders of this city, our mayor and our great city council. Lord Jesus, we just come asking you, God, to let your will be done tonight, whatever problems they're seeking resolution on, God, let it come together in a spirit of peace. And Lord, we thank you, God, for every department, God, within this great city. Lord Jesus, we thank you, God, for our fire department, our police department. Lord Jesus, sanitation, God, we just thank you today, God. And Lord, we continue to ask you to bless each house- And Lord, we continue to ask you to bless each household within this great city. And Lord, we will give you the honor, the glory, and the praise in Jesus' name. Amen and amen.
Praise to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this, at this time of year, presentations.
Presentation of the Police Department Annual Awards.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
We come before you tonight to present our annual awards to these well-deserving members of the Police Department. These men and women have worked hard, and they represent the Police Department with distinction. The recipients of these awards were selected by a combination of their peers, supervisors, and command staff. I am very proud to present these men and women to you this evening. First and foremost, Rookie of the Year, Officer Trenton Wilson. Officer Wilson began with the Police Department in April of last year, when he began his Police Academy training. After graduating in July, he hit the ground running and has been an asset to the department. Just last month, he completed field sobriety evaluation training, and next month, he'll celebrate one year with the city. Are there any friends and family members present for Officer Wilson? Next up, Supervisor of the Year, Sergeant Stephen Lanford. Sergeant Lanford started with the department in 2017 and attended the Police Academy. He was promoted to Corporal in 2021 and Sergeant in 2022. He has over 1,100 hours of career training and is a certified field training officer, as well as a crisis intervention team certified. Any family or friends of Sergeant Lanford? We can recognize you. Ms. Gardner Miller started with the department in 2023, working on the administrative side of law enforcement can be challenging work. Ms. Gardner Miller brings a high level of professionalism and dedication to the job every day. She has also assisted with our community events as part of our vital community policing efforts. Officer Jones started with us in 2022. After completing his academy training, he demonstrated an outstanding work ethic. This led to his assignment to the Traffic Unit, which was created last year. Now, I'm going to let Officer Jones put that stuff down, but then he needs to come right back up here because he is winning two awards this year. He is also the recipient of our Traffic Safety Award. The Traffic Safety Awards includes enforcement of DUI and DUI detection, traffic accident investigations, and self-initiated proactive policing initiatives. Next up, our Detective of the Year, Detective Isaac Caleb. Fresh off a search warrant, if I'm hearing correctly. Detective Caleb joined us in 2023 with almost 15 years of prior law enforcement experience. His experience led him to being hired as a detective, where his hard work and extensive knowledge have proven to make him an asset to the department. Detective Caleb also is winning a second award. Each year, the Police Department has a marksmanship competition at the Fairburn Public Safety Training Center. The importance of good marksmanship in our profession cannot be overstated. Detective Caleb had a perfect score, 300 and a 300. Oh, yes. Friends, family of Detective Caleb, please stand and be recognized. And finally, our final award, the Chief's Award. The recipient of this award is selected by me for outstanding contributions to the department. Captain Graham began her career in public safety 18 years ago as a jail officer. In her career, she has earned her Field Training Officer Certification, intermediate post certification, and completed the FBI trilogy of leadership training. She's trained in internal affairs, state certification management, use of force investigations, property room management, crime scene investigations, homicide investigations, and more. Last year, Captain Graham and her team's efforts led to the department earning recertification through the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police State Certification Program. She also led the department through our GCIC audit conducted by the GBI. With an increasing focus on officer health and wellness, Captain Graham spearheaded our initiative to create a Zen Room inside the Police Department where officers can have a moment of quiet reflection on days filled with chaos. The room will also serve as a lactation room for nursing mothers in the Police Department. And any family of Captain Graham, if you could stand and be recognized? Can I get all of our award recipients to come up for a photo with Mayor and Council,
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what we always do. Push in a little bit.
Congratulations.
Let's see Chief doing this. It's been 25 years. You ever got it?
You got the respect. And God, so, just like I said, you know, but like you said, that is good, that recognition has come around, you know? So that's a good thing.
You don't announce it, I'm going to announce it tonight.
Okay. You can do it.
I'm going to let them, I'm going to let them finish.
Really? 1971. What year did you start? I mean, what month did you start?
I started when I was 20 years old. I started five, six years.
So I was just a young man.
January, February, March, April.
I don't have any.
Members of council, we'll go now to our next agenda item. You have before you the adopted, the printed agenda. Can I entertain a motion to adopt the City Council Agenda?
So move.
Motion is made by Ms. Hudson, second by Mr. Heath. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries. The next portion of our meeting will be a public comment. Thirty minutes will, shall be allocated for public comment. Each speaker shall be limited three minutes. However, a speaker may transfer his or her three minutes to another speaker, but no speaker shall be permitted to speak for more than six minutes. In further, in the event of more than 10 speakers, how many speakers we got, Ms. James?
We have two speakers.
Two speakers, okay. Issues raised at this time are generally referred to the City Administrator for review. Responses will be provided at a later date. Would you go ahead and call our first speaker?
E.J. Brooks.
Mr. Brooks.
Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight for, hopefully I can bring some clarity about a longstanding issue with the cemetery. If you're headed towards Palmetta, right past the substation, the City of Fairburn Cemetery, you'll see where someone's left the roadway and wrecked up and ran into some graves. It's bad, it's a bad eyesore on the city. And I know last, last meeting, the City Administrator, basically, if I didn't misunderstand him, said that the individual graves are up to the families of those people that are buried there to maintain them. However, in the financial information that was handed out for the bond that was passed on page A18, I'd like to read to you, city financial information. You got one, the general fund, two, the special revenue fund, three, the motel hotel tax fund, and then four, the permanent fund. And it says that the cemetery fund is used to account for principal trust amounts, receive related income, interest income. The interest portion of the trust can be used to maintain the city cemetery. So now, I'm conflicted. I don't know who's right. And if I didn't misunderstand, I mean, is it up to the individuals? And look, I don't have any people buried there. My people buried on Virginia Avenue in College Park. But, or is it up to the city? And just like with the courthouse, the city got it for a dollar, there may have been years ago, some type of agreement that the city is going to maintain and take care of. And hey, do you all remember when they found a dead body over there in the woods? And they found out the dead body actually came from a grave, they buried somebody. They buried somebody in the city cemetery, found a person in there, and threw them over in the woods, and then, and then buried somebody in their grave. Y'all remember that? It was in the paper. Maybe you don't, that's okay. The point is, is that the city of Fairburn, the way I understand it now, I'm just trying to get clear. I mean, you know, I'm just trying to get some clarity. So help me understand, speaking on behalf of the people that can't speak for themselves. Thank you.
Literally. Sherei Freeman.
Yes, Ms. Freeman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens of Fairburn. I'm going to read a statement. I stand before you on behalf of the hard-working people who keep our community running and pay our taxes. Rising taxes have not improved our infrastructure or eased utility costs. Instead, they support an administration with inflated salaries and excessive benefits. For instance, some of our employees' salaries are comparable to that of Roswell, a city 80% larger and wealthier per capita, raising serious questions about our fiscal priorities. There's a saying, the salary increase makes you happy once a year. A healthy workplace keeps you happy throughout the year. Our dedicated city workers, fire, police, and those who keep our streets clean and ensure our lights and water remain on, work under challenging conditions for modest pay and little recognition. They work tirelessly, often under challenging conditions, yet they receive minimal pay and far too little appreciation. In stark contrast, our top-heavy leadership enjoys inflated salaries and lavish benefits, all while fostering a toxic work environment that undermines morale and values genuine public service. This imbalance not only compromises our essential services, but also erodes the spirit of community that should be the cornerstone of our city. Meanwhile, our residents face increasing hardships with rising costs and unmanageable utilities. They struggle to keep their lights on and their homes livable. Yet we continue approving expenses for leased vehicles, inflated salaries, and entertainment that brings no real return to the people footing the bill. Where is the relief for the taxpayer? These funds belong to the people of Fairburn, and every expenditure must be made with careful consideration of its true benefit to our community. If it hadn't been for Ms. Hudson, the water issue with the Water Authority, where we're paying millions of dollars for decades, would still be a silent issue. And blaming Betty Hannah, who is not here to represent herself, is not a fair thing. I'm calling on this council to do better. We must prioritize fiscal responsibility, act with integrity, and put our citizens first. Anything less is unacceptable. Beyond financial mismanagement, this council's culture of infighting, pettiness.
Thank you.
And political games.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hudson. That's it, ma'am. Thank you so much. I appreciate your comment. At this point, members of council, you have before you the minutes, City Council minutes from the February 24th, 25th, 25th. Could I entertain a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion to approve, it's been made and properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose?
I abstain. I was not here.
Okay. The next item?
First item is a rezoning and concurrents bearings. They are requesting Mayor and Council to continue the public hearing until the April 14th, 2025 meeting.
Staff is recommending that the item be continued to the next meeting. The applicant held a public meeting last Thursday, so we want to give sufficient time to look at those comments and make sure that if any, some of those items are addressed and present that to you at the next meeting.
So just so I can properly do it, do I make a motion for continuance? Entertain a motion for?
City council minutes from the February twenty-fourth, twenty-five, twenty-five. Could I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, it's motion been made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain. I was not here.
Okay. The next item.
First item is a rezoning and concurrents bearings. They are requesting mayor and council to continue the public hearing until the April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Staff is recommending that the item be continued to the next meeting. The applicant held a public meeting last Thursday, so we want to give sufficient time to look at those comments and make sure that, if any, some of those items are addressed and present that to you at the next meeting.
So just so, just so I can properly do it, do I make a motion for a continuance? And entertain a motion for a continuance on this item?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is properly made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
The next item is a resolution setting qualifying days for the general election. It is a request for mayor and council to approve Wednesday, August twentieth, Thursday, August twenty-first, and Friday, August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, for the qualifying dates for the November the fourth, twenty-twenty-five general election.
Members of council, you have before you a resolution setting qualifying dates for the general election. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
The next item is an amendment to the memorandum of understanding for the I eighty-five at Galette Road. It is a request for mayor and council approval of the amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the City of Fairburn and GDOT for the I eighty-five at Galette Road.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The City of Fairburn entered into a MOU with the Georgia Department of Transportation on August twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. However, the MOU was based on an estimate for four hundred thousand dollars for proposed consultant services. After the GDOT procurement process, it was determined that the actual cost of the consultant service would be four hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-one cents, thereby increasing the local share from eighty thousand dollars to ninety thousand, one seventy-seven and thirty-six cents. And that's based on a eighty-twenty local, I mean, federal and local distribution. The City of Fairburn also ended, entered into an agreement with the South Fulton CID on May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three for one hundred thousand dollars to cover the local share. So therefore, staff submitted an invoice to the South Fulton CID for the new distribution amount for ninety thousand, one seventy-seven, thirty-six on March third, and I just received notification that we should receive that payment by the end of the week.
Wow.
Awesome.
Awesome.
It would be no cost to the City of Fairburn. As such, staff recommends approval of the amendment agreement.
Members of council, you have before you item number five, amendment to a memo U for I eighty-five in Galette Road. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is made and properly second. Any questions or comments by council? And none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Next item is the noise ordinance update. It is a request for mayor and council approval of the proposed noise ordinance updates.
Hello again.
Evening.
At our work session, we discussed some of the pending updates. This is one of them. For the noise ordinance, we tried to focus on really refining all of our regulations. We wanted to build on what was existing, but to make sure that we were doing things that were comparable to both best practices and communities in the surrounding area. So a lot of the things that you see are still there. We're just making sure that we can do those, address those items in a way that's a little bit more expedient, that we actually have a measure. We added things like definitions. We are asking for an update to the construction hours because we noticed that most of the surrounding communities have hours Monday to Saturday, and ours were limited to Monday to Friday. We also have a lot of terminology to ensure compliance. We added a sound limit table so that it's not as, you know, objective. We can actually have a machine that goes out and measures based on the distance to see if there's a violation present. We have penalties as well. That was one of the items that was missing from our regulations. But, and we also have after-hours construction permits. We want to make sure that if there is something that is unplanned, that we have never predicted, that there is an extreme hardship and there's an emergency situation, that we can have that issue addressed at a faster pace. Now, the construction person who would be requesting that would have to notify everybody within seven hundred and, I think it's seven fifty feet or so. And they would also have to make sure that they're doing that within a certain timeline, and it would have to demonstrate in hardship. There's also temporary relief. Again, that is something that the city administration office would have oversight over just to make sure that if there is something that is happening that we did not predict, that we can also address that. There are exemptions in those regulations for things like if a first responder is going through your neighborhood, of course, there's going to be a sound associated with that. We have some refined definitions for like, you know, animals. People have dogs. If your watchdog is alerting you that somebody is coming, that is not a violation. But if that dog is doing it, you know, for multiple hours at a time, then of course that's a violation because, you know, they're do, the dog is doing its job. So we just wanted to make sure that we had enough teeth in there so that we could address issues. One of those things that was brought to our attention at the last work session was party. We have some regulations in there for party sounds to make sure that if something is happening late in the evening, that we can have the ordinance section and be able to address that issue. Any questions? I know it's a lot of pages, but I wanted to make sure that we were as extensive as we possibly could.
I'm gonna bring the item to the floor. In any way, any members of council have any questions? Member council, you have before you a noise ordinance update. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there? Motion is made by Ms. Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Heath, any questions or comments? Go ahead. I had a question. Go ahead, Ms. Davis.
Yes, yes. I wasn't here at the work session on February twenty-fourth. And I'm not sure Ms. Brookins, this would fall, fall under your department, or if it's the police department. But when we have like holidays, New Years, and whatever, and people can use their guns to shoot, are there any limitations on that? I mean, sometimes I hear gunshots before the New Year comes in. I hear gunshots three, four o'clock in the morning. You know, so is there-
That's definitely the police department.
Okay. I didn't have to ask you twice, okay?
It is always illegal to discharge a firearm inside city limits, unless you're at, obviously, our training center. There's already an ordinance on record that the discharge of firearms inside city limits is unlawful.
Okay, so no one should be shooting guns-
Nobody should be shooting guns off the city. The city. That's correct.
Okay.
You hear gunshots, please call nine-one-one.
Well, you know, I live very close to Union City. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Whitmore, here, Ms. Hudson.
Yes, so Ms. Brookins, my question is, I saw your, your chart with the decibels showing what would constitute severe, so on and so forth. Who carries the decibel equipment? Is it gonna be both code enforcement and after-hours, PD?
Yes.
So how many units do we have?
Currently, we don't have any because we don't have this provision in our ordinance. If it's approved, we will then purchase those items so that both the police department and code enforcement will have that resource available.
Okay, so when we purchase them, my, my assumption is that for IEPD, there'll be so many there, and then they'll leave them there for whatever shift comes on after. And of course, you'll have what you need for your staff. Okay, thank you.
Yes, it's a comment. So we have a lot of animals, dogs, in Fairburn.
Yes.
So how will we track down? Are we relying on the reports from citizens about barking dogs?
Typically, it is citizens that will be sort of the first point of contact because you know what's going on with your neighbors, especially if there's an excessive noise. What we wanted to make sure that, you know, we had enough provisions in there that if there was an issue of a dog that was being excessive, so that's past thirty minutes. But we also have people that have goats and farm animals. And yes, in the City of Fairburn, we are a very unique city, which is why our ordinances are so extensive because we have industrial areas. We also have farm areas. And typically, it is the residents that will file a complaint. And right now, because we don't have specific regulations in place, it's hard to address those issues in a way that's fair.
Well, you're gonna have a hard time with the dog issue. I'll tell you that. So I wanna just cue you up to kind of look at that to make sure that you don't have petty nuisance complaints from neighbors, somebody's dog inside their home or whatever. I can see outside, prolonged time of barking, how that can become a problem. But I also can see how, we wanna say that adults wanna manage themselves, but Fairburn has a lot of dogs. I know, I done rescued a lot of them. So at the end of the day, we wanna make sure that we don't set the staff up for failure, that you guys can accurately detect what's a nuisance and what's not. That's all. Thank you.
I think that's an excellent point, and we also partner with Fulton County. So it's not just our code enforcement team. It's Fulton County providing us with data so that we can see where there's a concentration of issue that might be outside the scope of just a sound issue. If there is repeated issues going on and the Fulton County Animal Control provides us with data showing that this is a prevalent issue, then we can address it that way. So we're trying to be kind of comprehensive. We have a community of people that love their dogs, and we don't really have a whole lot of issues. But if there's an issue with excessive noise, we just wanna be able to address it.
Okay, thank you.
And not to prolong it, can you just help, for clarification purposes for me? Once, just say, kind of following up on the comment you just made, because you beat me to the question I was gonna ask. At what point does Fulton County Animal Control come in? And so I guess my requesting is gonna be, once Fulton County Animal Control has been brought in outside of code enforcement, I guess my question is, at what point does the person at risk of receiving a citation? Is, is that as a result of animal control coming in, or?
Both, actually.
How does that work?
Both, actually. So if there is an issue of danger, please call the police department. If there's an issue of a stray dog, we have a contract with Fulton County. They, you can call as many times as you would like, and they are supposed to be addressing that issue. And then they provide us with the data. Now, if you have an issue of something not being addressed, or, you know, you felt like that call wasn't accurate, please tell the code enforcement team and we can get on that. I think that's one of sort of the pieces of closing the loop, just having some means of not just tracking it, but knowing when that issue has not been addressed. So to your question, I would say it's, it's a team effort to make sure that all those items are addressed.
Right, and, and I got a question for the PD, and I'm almost literally asked this in an open meeting, but I was asked this recently twice by a resident in another, in another neighborhood whereby dog is let, you know, let go some periodically, let loose. And long story short was, the person says, you know, "Mayor, I'm just gonna ask you point blank. If I'm in danger, I'm gonna shoot the dog. If, if I see the dog loose and I'm near it, I'm gonna kill him." You know, and I know that creates all type of outrage dealing with PETA and the whole nine yards. I was just, I guess my question was gonna be, and I'm trying to ask it as objectively as I can, on the, will the, will the person, I'm almost getting asked this publicly, would the person be having, the, will they be at risk if they can't prove that the dog, in this case, a dog is loose, a Doberman, and the dog, I see the dog is coming, and I kill him? And so about, I guess my, the burden of proof is what the gentleman was asking me. Who's the burden of proof? I said, "Well, truthfully, I don't know. I'm not a lot, I'm not a cop."
Sir, so the way Georgia law reads, you can use a firearm in self-defense if it's in defense of your life or to stop the commission, commission of a forcible felony. That's generally what, what the standard is. I don't wanna too clearly-
Right.
Draw that line or define that too, you know, too closely just because there is so many different ways that situation could pan out. You know, the size of the dog, for example, versus the size of the person, the age of the person. Are we talking about a senior citizen or someone younger? So there's, there's just so many factors that could go into that possibility. Again, I don't wanna narrow it down too finely.
And that's why I was really worried about, because like I said, I've had this, two residents to mention it. Coincidentally, both dogs in two different parts of the city, a hundred pounds plus, so, you know, you decide.
Quick follow-up.
Yes, ma'am.
So mayor, this sounds like this could have, well, I wanna make it very clear. My dog was injured in this community at three o'clock in the morning. A puppy snuck out. He is a rottweiler, and he was shot. And we know that the person was not an adult. It was a teenager. I have contacted the city on multiple occasions about this particular home, and the officers, I think you probably know Chief in the cul-de-sac over there, it is some issues. So I'm hoping this is not in reference to mine because mine is well taken care of. It is an unfortunate incident that happens, but, you know, I wanna get some clarity on that as well. Because especially if we're in a neighborhood where we know each other as neighbors, and I can get a phone call and say, "Hey, Ms. Hudson, my, my light bill is high. What you gonna help, you know, can you figure out what's going on with that?" Versus someone's dog mistakenly creeping out at three o'clock in the morning, that's not an incident that a dog is going after someone to attack them. And then just the same as that person will take the time to call, if they have an issue on my cell phone, a city phone, same thing, "Hey, your dog got out. Hey, just wanna let you know, three o'clock in the morning, whatever, we going." But we learned the hard way. And so thank you to Blue Pearl in Midtown, who is, gave stellar care for our fur baby that I rescued here in Fairburn. I ended up rescuing three rottweilers. Two of them was not able to be rehomed, and so Fulton County, we turned them into Fulton County, and they did what they do. But on the subject of Fulton County, this is an issue. Fulton County is not responding to these issues in our community as relates to dogs because there is a staff shortage. And when they do respond, they're very wonderful, because they've had to respond to me at least six times. And then with Mr. Phillips, I had an issue with somebody, little dog came in. I didn't want it to happen, but the rottweilers had their day with them. And then we didn't know how we dispose of that. Mr. Phillips was like, it was an awkward situation, but we got it. We gotta narrow it down on these little things. And we don't want our fur babies being target practice in our community. But I understand the onus as a owner to secure that pet and make sure, just like a child. If a child gets out after hours, I am still liable as that parent. So with my pet and five thousand dollars later, I am liable to make sure that Dash does well. So yes, mayor, that is an issue that we need to make sure that we kind of follow up on.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Whitmore?
Just a follow-up to what you were mentioning, mayor, and particularly for you, chief. What is the law in Georgia? Are they not supposed, do we not have a leash law in Georgia?
Yes, there is both a state and county ordinance, I believe. All dogs should be leashed. They should be behind a fence. They can't be out on a runner where it's a, excuse me, a tie-out, where they're just tied to like a stake in the ground. That's against the county ordinance. Yeah, so dogs should be restrained.
Right, now, I understand some dogs do get out early in the morning, but I'm, I'm in particularly referencing, I, we have a lot of people in my community that walk. And they walk with a stick or with a weapon. And if that dog is not on a leash and comes towards them, you have people that are afraid of dogs, all right? And in that case, based on the scenario that the mayor laid out, based on the question that was asked of them, if they shoot their dog, it's during the day, they're going out exercising, not looking for an encounter with one, but it happens. In that case, that would be extenuating circumstances. I believe that would be the legal term.
Again, I don't wanna give too much of a fine point on when people should be shooting their guns for any reason other than in defense of life. Just because I don't wanna get misconstrued by any kind of way and say, "The chief is saying, go shoot dogs." The chief's saying, "You can't defend yourself." I'm trying to keep it, you know, it's gotta be circumstantial.
I understand. I didn't wanna ask the attorney. I didn't wanna put him on the spot.
Well, I'll say this. You're not going around arbitrarily shooting dogs when they're off the leash. They should be on the leash, but you have to, like the chief said, if you're defending yourself or another, and it's a credible defense, then you have a good argument. But at the end of the day, you know, it'll, it'll turn on the specifics of that particular case. So it's hard to give a hard and fast answer.
If I may just add, I'll say this. My son had his dog, a pit, all right, female pit. And a dog got loose from another community, big dog, and ended up getting stuck. All right, and I'm sure, my son is a cop, if he would've had his weapon, he would've shot that dog to get his dog loose from the other dog. Okay, so there's always extenuating circumstances, and that's the point I'm trying to make. Depends on the circumstances.
Absolutely, I agree.
With that being said, members of council, all in, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
Next item is a call-up discussion on the water authority. It is a request to have mayor and council updated on the recent changes.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, mayor and council. Tuesday, February eleventh, has been the most recent meeting of the Middle Chattahoochee Regional Water and Sewer Authority. And at that meeting, as I updated the council by email on February twelfth, the consensus of the authority board was to begin the process to sunset or end the water authority as a functioning body. Due to the NLC conference, the authority has not met since that last meeting on Tuesday, February 11th. We are scheduled to meet again on tomorrow. So there's been no further action. As relates to that meeting in February, the only vote taken by the authority was to no longer move forward with any future plans. So in terms of building a water treatment facility, in terms of doing anything as a future effort, there was a vote taken that says that the authority has ceased all future planning. With that said, there is 25 years of operational and financial history goes along with the Middle Chattahoochee, previously South Fulton Water Authority. How best to ensure that Fairburn specifically and all of these three cities can move forward in a way that protects everyone's interest is where our due diligence needs to be at this point. I will tell you that in terms of the bond debt, the city attorney has previously opined that though the authority itself can cease or that we can remove ourselves from it, what we cannot remove ourselves from is the debt that was previously incurred in previous years. So that remains an outstanding issue. The authority also has significant assets. There is a permit from APD to withdraw water from the Chattahoochee, which is highly valuable. There is land. There is a reservoir. There are mitigation credits. All of these have financial value. There will need to be an in-depth assessment and decisions by the water authority as to what to do with these assets. As everyone on this council is well aware, water is an essential life source. And so though this body, the Middle Chattahoochee Regional Water Authority, may not exist in some future circumstance, the need for water is constant. I will tell you that we received good news on Friday, March 14th. This council previously on February 10th approved an intergovernmental agreement with the Fayette County Board of Commissioners. It was approved unanimously by the Fayette County Board of Commissioners on Thursday, March 13th. So that agreement has now been approved by both governing bodies. We are now entering into conversations and meetings with Fayette County to begin to spec out the process and begin to move forward on that. That would be the first water source for the city of Fairburn, other than Atlanta, since 1957. It's up to 1.5 million gallons a day, as we talked about in our previous discussions. Along with that, I will tell you that we had a previously scheduled meeting with the senior staff of the Department of Atlanta Watershed Management on last week. Very interesting discussion. Atlanta, as everyone is also well aware, has a big issue on their hands as it relates to the future of water. In a press statement last week, Mayor Dickens said the early estimates are a $2 billion, 10-year plan. In talking to the interim commissioner, Commissioner Wiggins, he said that that was a very early estimate and that there's more to come. What he did tell us in that meeting, we discussed a range of issues, is that it will include a rate increase for all users, as well as cities outside of Atlanta having to help to some proportionate degree with their capital investment. I will tell you that there is regional discussions. Other stakeholders are aware that the authority may be changing its status. That is not a secret. And there are water issues regionally that need to be discussed. So I'll pause there. The next meeting is tomorrow night, and hopefully there'll be more details to provide after that next meeting.
Ms. Hudson, go ahead. You added this. I had to go ahead.
Is it on? Is it on? Okay. So one of the things, when you talked about indebtedness, one of the things I want the water authority to consider, there were some behavior and some players in place that we need to consider how our finances were managed during that period. And if there needs to be recoupment legally, we have to consider that. And I'm being very gentle when I say I've did an extensive, very extensive trace on who is who, what is what. And there is a lot of concern about how our money was managed and where it was invested. So I'm grateful that the authority has came to this decision. First of all, I gotta highlight Mayor Vince Williams in the city of Union City, who I know walked into this like every other person that is now leading our cities. And we have three cities now with the power to, to go after what is ours, and we should not leave one stone unturned. If I can call it out in my house, I'm gonna call it out in everybody else's house. I track corruption, and it was to the extent that we must not let this pass. And I think you know what I'm talking about, Mr. Phillips. It was a lot of issues raised, but...
I do, Councilwoman Hudson, and let me say I wholeheartedly agree with your statement. I have had early conversations with the city attorney. I don't know what the other two cities will do. I don't work for them. Fairburn needs a due diligent, thorough operational and financial assessment, forensic assessment of the past 25 years. I can tell you, having been on the board, I've asked questions about record-keeping and storage and have not gotten satisfactory answer. Essentially, there's no clarity as to where those 25 years of records and agreements and financial documents reside. And so I don't want to speak for the city attorney, but in our early conversations, we at least feel that our responsibility is to protect the interests of the city of Fairburn. I can't speak beyond that. But I agree wholeheartedly with your statement. I don't know what has happened over those 25 years and who has done what. And until we know that, it's not time to end anything until we know all of the details and can then act accordingly.
Okay, track the first order and then the actions behind that, and you'll start seeing the movement.
Any other, any other members of council? Other than, I was just gonna mention that a lot of the questions actually started with this, I lost track of time, when we were trying to, when me and you were asking a bunch of questions at the retreat, and then, excuse me, we didn't, it wasn't any secret that water, that Fairburn was seeking an alternate water supply. That created, that created some concerns for a few members. But nonetheless, as the city administrator made it real clear during that retreat, that we have to be responsible for what happens in Fairburn, because we've got vendors and businesses calling us about app. And so, again, Ms. Hudson, your own point, actually myself and the city administrator and the city attorney has had in great depth conversation of kind of what you just discussed. So again, we do have a meeting tomorrow night, so my prayer is for us to be able to come out of that meeting with some real insight as relates to what we can update council at our next council meeting. Does any other member of council have a question? Seeing none? Okay, we'll go to our reports.
Next item is the Finance Director Monthly Report.
Mayor, before Ms. Chris gives the financial report for this month, I do want to update mayor and council that on last Thursday, our Finance Director, Ms. Tamika Billingsley, accepted a job offer for a senior staff position with a local school system. She has spent the majority of her career in the school system and was offered a position there. We have begun our recruitment for filling that position and have gotten several viable candidates so far. Ms. Chris will present the report for this evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'll provide a high-level overview of the city's financial status from February 2025. I'll send it to you if you want me to send it now, or I can go through the numbers with you. Because he doesn't, can you, he's in his own, you know, she doesn't. Well, Mr. Phillips pulls the report. Revenues for February 2025 exceeded expenditures by $8.4 million. Year-to-date, the general fund received $17.9 million, and expenditures dispersed was $9.5 million. As of February 2025, the city has collected 49.1% of budgeted revenues, which is almost at 50%, one month shy of the mid-year budget point. And as of February 2025, the city expensed 26% of those budgeted expenditures. So revenues exceeded expenditures by $8.4 million.
You're not able to pull it up?
Okay, we just flip-flop reports. His report first, your, their report first.
You have yours ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
My father was...
It happens.
I need you sitting right here.
It always happens.
Okay, yeah, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go with the city administrator's report first and then come back. Yes, absolutely. Go ahead.
Members of council, let me proceed with the city administrator's report for February of 2025. First, I want to acknowledge all the tremendous awards that I've received this evening by Chief Cuzillo, the outstanding Fairburn Police Department that does...
A wonderful job each day. I would tell you that in addition to everything you saw this evening, that for the year 2024, Fairburn Police Department recorded the lowest rate of Part I crimes in the city of Fairburn since they began record-keeping. There was a... It was a 37% decrease in Part I crimes for the year 2024. So all of those outstanding men and women that you saw, including our administrative staff, are all part of that tremendous success. We have a safe city, and it's due to the dedicated men and women who work for the Fairburn Police Department, and the support that this mayor and council provides them in being able to do their jobs. So I want to commend the police department. In addition, in February, we saw the kickoff of our comprehensive plan update with over 50 live attendees and over 1,400 views online. That process continues. There have been several steering committee meetings, public meetings. We are making sure that we are reaching out to everyone as possible. The conversations have been enlightening and engaging, and listening to our residents provide us with input and guidance on what they would like to see in our mandated comprehensive plan. Economic development was key in the Train Depot RFP and evaluation, which identified Buttermilk Biscuits Restaurant as a new tenant for the downtown destination location. That contract is being finalized, and they will soon begin work on the space to begin operations later this year. We have firefighters that have successfully completed the comprehensive training conducted by Pierce Manufacturing for our new apparatuses was completed in February. The police department, in addition to having such outstanding crime statistics, they also participated in the Love of Reading event at Campbell Elementary on February 14th and the Career Day on February 26th. Our human resources team held our first annual wellness fair on Thursday, February 20th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Wellness fair featured vendors aligned with the city's eight dimensions of wellness. This event promoted a healthy lifestyle. Parks and Recreation continues their outstanding award-winning programs, including the annual Father Daughter Ball. Planning and zoning continues its collaborative and community-focused work. And the code enforcement team recently attended the Georgia Association of Code Enforcement Officers Conference GACE, as they do each year. Our Fairburn Power Department started a new lineman and added two new bucket trucks. Our Water Department conducted a joint tour of the Highway 92 Booster Pump Station with the city of Fairburn and the city of Atlanta Public Works. That booster station is right on Highway 92 and has made a significant difference in water pressure readings over the last 30 days. I trust you've had an opportunity to see the entirety of the report, and I will pause at that point. Yes, sir.
All right, just a question, because you did like we as educators do, say terms that everybody might not be familiar with. So I wasn't familiar with. What's a Part I crime?
Oh, I'm gonna let the police...
I don't have my monthly report with me, but a Part I crime is considered the most serious crime. It's murder, manslaughter, sexual offenses, assault, robbery, the most serious crimes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other members of council got a question about the report? Are we able to come back to the other one? Okay.
Apologies. Okay, we'll start over. So again, good evening, mayor and council. I will present to you the February 2025 financial report for this year. Revenues exceeded expenditures by $8.4 million. Year-to-date, the general fund revenues received a total of $17.9 million, and expenditures dispersed was $9.5 million. As of February 2025, the city has collected 49.1% of budget revenues, which is almost 50% at five months into the fiscal year. As of February 2025, the city expensed 26% of those budgeted expenditures. Here is the general fund statement of revenues and expenditures from year comparison from fiscal year 2324 to 2425. The February 2025 fund balance is at $30,797,355. And here is a breakdown of the revenues received by fund. And it reports month-to-date and year-to-date. The total received a 49.12%. This slide gives you a breakdown of expenditures by department, month-to-date and year-to-date, with a total year-to-date expenditures of $9,510,681, which is 26.04% of the expenditure budget. The city's enterprise fund for February 2025, year-to-date revenues exceed expenditures by $2.3 million. The year-to-date enterprise fund revenues received a total of $10.4 million, and expenditures dispersed equate to $8.2 million. As of February 2025, the city has collected 37.1% of budgeted revenues. And as of February 2025, the city's enterprise fund expensed 9% of those budgeted expenditures. This slide gives you a comparison of what we receive month-to-date and year-to-date. Year-to-date revenues, $10,419,137 for 37.11% of budgeted revenues. Expenditures, $8,153,455 for 29.04% of expenditures. To date, the revenue expenditures are over by $2.2 million. This slide gives you a comparison of how the enterprise fund is doing in a two-year comparison from fiscal year 2324 to our current fiscal year 2425. At this time during last fiscal year, we only collected $8.6 million. To date, we've collected $10.4. And then expenditures comparison last fiscal year was about $7 million, a little over $7 million. To date, we're at $8.1. And with that, that concludes the financial report, and I will take any questions.
Does any member of council have a question regarding... Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
Thank you so much for that report. A couple of things I'd like to ask you to, if you're unable to provide it to me tonight, if you will follow up and provide us the answer to those questions. And one is regarding the opera funds. I just wanted to confirm that we have obligated 100% and/or... and/or expended all of those dollars, because the deadline is approaching, and so there's a lot of communication to make sure that all the cities have met their reporting obligations regarding that.
Yes, ma'am. Prior to the departure of Ms. Billingsley, she did confirm that all of the opera funds have been obligated and/or expensed, but I will definitely confirm that and give a detailed report to mayor and council.
All right, and then could you also provide with the final date for expenditure? Obligation is one thing, but expenditure is something else. And remind us of what we've obligated those funds for.
Yes, ma'am.
If you don't mind. Secondly, I'd like to ask, so this, the cemetery fund, this has come up several times now, and I, I'd like information to be shared with this body on what it is, what our obligations are relative to it, and how do we fund the cemetery fund? And if you can just remind me of what was budgeted this fiscal year for that category. So is that a follow-up answer?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we will get details and provide a full answer to your question. I'm not aware of any revenue that the cemetery is currently generating. And legally, the city's responsibility is general maintenance. We've been through a legal assessment by the city attorney's office, which has clarified that the individual plots are owned by family members. And so the city does not have any legal right to move a headstone or do anything to someone's final resting place that would reside with the families. What we do is general maintenance at the cemetery. We make sure we cut the grass. We try to get, you know, pick up trash to general maintenance. But legally, we don't have any legal authority over anyone's final resting place that resides with the families. The details of the cemetery fund I will get for you. I'm not in this conversation aware that the cemetery is generating any revenue at all, but I will get the exact details of that cemetery fund, which I believe is an older reference, and let you know exactly what that consists of, what it was done in the past, and where it is today.
Well, I appreciate that, and I am aware that, you know, we, we, whether we were obligated to or not, it was practice of the city to maintain-
We still do.
Yeah, okay. And then I also thought that the, that it was a general obligation-funded item, that it just came out of the general fund. But if that is incorrect, please share that with me. And could you specifically address the issue that Mr. Brooks brought up about interest? You know, interest on what, generated how, for what timeframe, and have we ever done that? So I, I'd appreciate, appreciate that information. And then lastly, I would just ask if we could do a reminder to our citizens about the homestead exemption deadline for April first. The card that you guys sent out with the utility bill, it was a great tool, but I've heard from several seniors who said that they didn't get it. And I specifically wanted to know if they were Fairburn residents and not Fairburn mailing address, because there's still a constant confusion about that. But the more we can communicate that, the better. And then I would also ask, since we approved the Norris ordinance, if we can begin that communication as well to just, to inform citizens about it and set up some type of particular to just remind us of those obligations relative to the Norris ordinance. And then lastly, can you just remind us about the homestead opt-in, opt-out issue that is now, was approved on last year's ballot? And what, what that means for the city, and what, what are we doing going forward relative to that?
So I can get you some additional details in reference to, I think we had a work session on that particular topic. But I would tell you that there is a pending legislative effort in the state legislature to extend the deadline for municipalities to opt-in or opt-out. So we will wait to see how that resolves in the state legislature. It is currently pending. But there is a bill that I believe has made it over to crossover day and is now considering final passage. So if and when that passes, then that would extend the deadline that was initially in the bill that was passed last year. There were some other proposed changes to House Bill five eighty-one for clarity, and so which of those get approved, again, we'd have to wait to see what the final bill says, but we can certainly clarify what was originally passed.
Okay, and again, if we can communicate relative to what that is and what impact that will have on us as citizens of this community relative to property taxes, because that issue continues to come up. And this is one of those things that was passed that's gonna have an impact on us. And so the better and the more often we can communicate with our citizens about what that is and what that means for us and to us would be helpful. I'd appreciate that.
Now, we do have a page on our website dedicated, but I work with our communications director to make sure we push that out to our residents.
Yes, thank you so much.
And a follow-up, mayor? Follow-up.
Yes, go ahead.
So, so Mr. Phillips, and unless I heard Mr. Brooks wrong, did indicate that there was an automobile that went up and destroyed some of those grave sites? So with the response that will be going out to Mr. Brooks, we know what vehicle caused the damage.
Mm-hmm.
All right? So if the city is not doing anything, is their communication going to the family with the information about the vehicle that caused the damage to ensure that it's being taken care of?
So the city attorney is assisting us with deed research. As you know, many of those burial sites go back many, many years. And so we are currently actively doing everything we can to identify specifically who legally owns which plot, specifically to your question, the one was damaged in car accident. We absolutely have a police report, and so all of that information is available. Who is the legal owner of that plot is the deed research that we are currently undergoing.
And I would go one step further, too. So if we cannot find that individual, is in a city-owned property graveyard, all right? We have the information. The paperwork through to the insurance company and get it resolved. That way, we're making everybody whole, if there's something within our purview. Just consider that.
We, we could look at all the details to see again. As we currently understand it, it is owned by a private individual, and we're trying to identify who that is. From there, we will figure out what other options could be legally available.
And my last comment would be, when we do have citizens coming up to the mic with comments from A to Z, and I know your office sends out the response, but I know I have received numerous calls from citizens. Well, what was the response to X question? I think that should also be communicated, not only to the individual that is coming up to the podium, but to our citizenship and this, this elected body as well. So we're all on the same page, so there's no confusion.
Thank you.
Any other questions, my council?
Yes, I had a question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Not for Ms., I'm not for the finance. You're done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Phillips, you're welcome. The charter review. Where are we at with the charter review? What process? I know that they, I just need to know where we at, because it's been a year now.
Yes, and it was projected to take a year initially. They've asked for some additional time. They will be here tentatively at the next council meeting, the Carl Vincent Institute of the University of Georgia. Lori Brill, the attorney who is leading that effort, will come and give all the details to you directly as elected officials, exactly where the process is. I'll let her speak to that. She has been doing that independent of the staff in the city. So they are undertaking that work. I know they've had several conversations with the city attorney's office over some legal matters. And so she will be here on April fourteenth to provide a detailed update to this body.
Okay, thank you.
One last question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, I would ask, are we going to have a retreat, mayor and council, in this first, well, not the quarter, but at least the first half of the year?
Yes, that is our intention. We are looking to secure both a location and a date that is amenable to the consensus of council. When we initially floated some dates, they didn't work well for several reasons. And so we are now looking at additional dates, both facility, and then we'll come back to this body to get direction as to which dates work best, but it is still our intention for there to be a retreat, yes.
All right, I would ask if you offer us multiple dates, consideration, more likelihood that all of us can participate.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
With that being said, no other comments. I will now go to council comments. I'll start with Mr. Whitmore.
Now, thank you, mayor. Well, as you all may know, that I am a proud father of someone that participated in high school sports as well as college sports, who have received championships on both levels. Well, I'm proud to say that we have citizens within this great city of Fairburn that plays with the Creekside Girls High School basketball team. And they achieved basketball championship in a four-A state championship. So I, I think it's important that myself, as a public official, to number one, acknowledge that, because it takes a lot for a student athlete to do the things that they do and still maintain their academic, academic process as well. So congratulations to Creekside and any of our citizens that have daughters that participate on that team. Congratulations as well. I'm hearing that there will be a parade for them to recognize them. And just go to the Creekside website to find out when that may be, so that you can be out there and yell and holler and scream to say congratulations to our state champions.
Yes.
Creekside High School Girls Basketball Team.
Thank you, mayor.
And Mr. Whitmore, if you don't mind, actually, I was gonna mention that afterwards. Me and Mr. Whitmore had a conversation this past weekend, including last night. And I want to thank you, and I was talking about how can the city assist with basically making sure that moves forward. We had a, the city administrator and myself, this even had a conversation with a city official in South Fulton, and they recommended some conversation that we need to have with the school in our efforts to make sure that commences. So I just wanted to publicly mention that, you and I, in this case, had a conversation, and you promoted it, so.
I intentionally did not say anything more until we-
Yes, so we go ahead. I just, I just wanted to make that knowledgeable. You finish, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, mayor.
Ms. Hudson?
Yes, well, I'm a proud former Creekside mom and Creekside PTA president, whose daughter received a scholarship Coca-Cola Award, and she played in the Division Two Peach State belt, so Creekside's got it. Real sustainable community change requires the initiative and engagement of community members. It is important that we, as a body, ensure that we highlight that in our practice of leadership. And with that said, I want to first remind us, our residents, that there's many ways to participate this, this upcoming month. We have a State of the City address that's coming up. Our comp plan survey still needs your participation. We had eighty-eight people participate, and we have a community well over six thousand. So we want to be for participation there. April first, of course, the homestead exemptions deadline is approaching, and this is Women's History Month. Specifically, I have, did not have the opportunity to do a presentation here at council, but I will be sending out the acknowledged leaders in women's history for the city of Fairburn. Look out for that on my website at www.fairburnforward.com. If you want to be considered in that highlight and you are a leader, unsung hero, and a female here in the city of Fairburn, send me a message at www.fairburnforward.com. Thank you. Good night.
Ms. Hudson, I was gonna say, you brought up something that I was trying to catch before you finished, the strategic plan. If I'm correct, there's a major date coming up, the meeting we were in last Thursday. Is that April the twenty-fourth?
April the twenty-
I just want to make sure, since you brought that, I want to make sure I didn't miss that. Could you announce what that is?
So both the consultants doing the comp plan as well as strategic plan will be partnering to try to capture as much community engagement at that meeting on April twenty-fourth. And the survey that Councilman Hudson referenced is not just a comp plan survey, but it's also for the strategic plan. So we'll be using the data for both consultants.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hudson, you-
Yeah, so this, okay, yeah, that, that's it, that's it.
Okay, gotcha. And in this case, Mr. Smallwood?
No comments.
Okay, Ms. Davis?
Oh, yes, thank you, mayor. I would just like, again, to say congratulations to our police department, Fairburn's finest. You all really have done a great thing for our city. And I really appreciate the chief taking time to recognize those in the department that have just done outstanding work. Otherwise, we wouldn't know. And so I really appreciate you letting us know about that, and we'll congratulate those that just stood out. Thank you so much for representing the city of Fairburn well and protecting us well. Thank you so much.
Ms. Porter-Jones?
Yes, I too want to congra, say congratulations to the police department for the awards that they received. And I can't recall if, I mean, to have two officers to receive two awards in the same night. What an accomplishment that is. So thank you, chief, for that recognition, and we really appreciate all the efforts. And congratulations on that statistic about the Park, Park One?
Park One.
Um, yes, the, the substantial decline in those. That is great news, great news. And I also want to echo the sentiments of Councilman Whitmore in terms of congratulating the Creekside Girls. And how wonderful it is that we get to acknowledge and recognize them during this Women's History Month. And it is further substantiated by the chief's award to our female. What's her position?
Captain.
Captain, okay? And how awesome that is. And so I just wanted to highlight that and say thank you. And I am looking forward to celebrating with Creekside on their phenomenal win. Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Mr. Heath?
Yes, I likewise would like to thank our police chief. I've heard nothing but raving reviews about you, sir, and I appreciate that. And the simple fact that you're, you're recognizing your officers, that is something that, I mean, you very rarely ever see. In twenty-five years of law enforcement myself, and I don't ever remember receiving, or anybody else as far as that goes in the departments I was in, receiving awards. But, you know, that kind of builds everybody up to the point that they are willing and wanting to do an excellent job. And I just want to say thank you, sir, that you do take that to heart. And by and far, the cemetery down there, I have seen many people, friends in the past that, that were buried there many, many years ago. And Sid Brown, if I'm not mistaken, is the one that is the person that is over that particular cemetery, because he's brought before, he and a couple of other people in, in this community have brought forward about that, the upkeep and everything. So I appreciate that, that you would take that into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, and ladies and gentlemen, I just, again, was very happy to hear that fourteen hundred views in our strategic plan meeting. I really need you, members of the public, to come and participate in the meeting April the-
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, April the twenty-fourth, I gotta write it down. We really need your input so that we can basically craft a, craft a plan that is indicative of the people's demands. Again, you heard Mr. Whitmore talk about the parade, Creekside parade that we're, that the staff is working on to make sure that commences. that the staff is working on to make sure that commences, police come out and support our young ladies as they've made a major mark in this community that'll never be erased. Again, a State of City address is on April the third at six PM, Overworld Christian Ministries. I want to thank our housing authority, in this case, we had a meeting actually a week ago, last Wednesday, here in the city of Fairburn. And so we're working on trying to staff that board, because I understand Mr. Span is really looking forward to taking it to another level. And so it's been hard trying to get men and women to volunteer their time with it. I've had a few people complain about it, but the time, the schedule wouldn't allow them to participate. But I've got a candidate that I'm going to try to bring to our next council meeting as we finish vetting him. I want to also finally thank the police department and the presentations. And again, just a mark that our police department has made as relation to Part One crimes. I would ask that several of you people Google the ten dangerous cities in Georgia as twenty dangerous cities. I'm just going to leave it at that.
Dangerous cities.
No, I'm telling you, dangerous cities that you're going to see. And so I want to commend our police department that we're not on that list anywhere to be found. And so, and so that's why, that's why I used to. And so then finally, I want to, I actually want to thank our two state representatives, Lydia Glaze and Derek Jackson, for getting our legislation through the Capitol this year. They both worked very hard, so thank you so much. With that being said, we don't have an executive, we don't have an executive, so can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? That motion carries.